Or negative three point zero six percent of the October twenty twenty four allocation. For the fiscal year, we have collected eight hundred sixty nine thousand one hundred twenty two dollars and seventy two cent. A decrease of two thousand ninety eight dollars thirty eight cent, which is a negative zero point two four percent less than tax allocation for the year beginning October one twenty twenty four. If you flip over, I have a correspondent from Miss Vallet State University. I would like for the board to um have a conversation, look over. Um they would like to come to the table in regards to this due to their budget. My next is the uh city employee appreciation Christmas party. Um hosted by none other than the council, Councilman uh McCord, Mr. McCord. Um it will be September thirteenth or December at seven P M. At Delta Emporium and Events, two eighteen East Johnson Street, Greenwood, Mississippi. Um I I was going to end my mayor's report with Ms. Stevens, she wanted to, Ms. Stevens, she wanted to bring some information regarding the parade. Um doesn't seem like she's here.
Okay, if she shows up, we'd be glad to hear about the parade, so.
President, one question for the mayor. Did we get a holiday schedule from the governor saying what day will be closed for the holiday after Thanksgiving?
As of right now, I have not.
What day will be closed then?
Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, twenty six, uh twenty twenty sixth through twenty eighth.
So we've never been closed since Wednesday. He doing Wednesday this year?
So we're doing, uh we were doing a half a day, so I just, yeah, I would do the whole day.
So Wednesday to uh Friday, to Friday. Uh thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh and I'm just asking, is that something we can do legally on under your au- authority or do? Cause I know we we always have to lately get a request from the governor, what we can do. And they usually give us, I know Thursday and Friday, I mean, I have no problem with Wednesday, I just want to make sure we don't get in any trouble by doing that.
So from my understanding, if they're, if they're closed, we can't force them to be there. Like if they have an offer that is a government holiday, we can't require them to be there. But as opposed, if we're closed, I don't, man, I don't think that, but I can definitely.
Well, yeah, definitely check in and make sure that we can do it. And 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 make sure that you, I basically, I have no problem with that too, that you can do it and don't need council approval, okay? So that's all I'm saying, okay?
And my president, I admit that, right, because we can't, we can't get in trouble for that. But we're not following the government on our holiday schedule.
Yeah.
So basically, we can't force our employees to work on a government holiday.
No, if.
If Wednesday is a government holiday, that's who I guess we ask.
We actually, Wednesday, we start.
No, so Wednesday is not the holiday, Thursday is the holiday.
Right, so our question though is Wednesday, we, the city taking off Wednesday, that's our question.
Yeah, we, they usually do a half a day, we just gave them the full day instead.
Okay, and and all I'm saying, I have no problem with that, we just want to make sure that Wednesday is legal.
Yes.
And if the governors say you can only be off Thursday and Friday, or if the state say, we want to make sure we in compliance, that's all, you know? Okay.
Um that's concluding the following mayor's report.
Okay. All right, public agenda, first we have Dear, Dearworth Ricks.
How you all doing?
All right, how you doing, Ms. Ricks?
Good, uh thank you so much for uh having us again, um we have some folders um that we like to pass out to everyone. So uh why, why, this is uh Kayla, she can introduce herself, so uh my name is Dearworth Ricks. Um I'm an advocate of our house. Um just me about myself, I retired from Mississippi Department of Collection about seven years ago and and uh I was the uh director of legal services there uh my last maybe seven years. And so I had a passion for what I do, and so uh I wanted to volunteer just to my service. And opportunity came, and so started working with our house. Um and so our house is located in Greenwood, but we service the Mississippi Delta area. And it's very important that everyone knows the services that's available, uh considering know we have the missed violence uh issues that uh cases and and homicide, you know, just making sure everybody know that when it come back to violence, that there's no phase uh for the perpetrate or for the victim. So this could be anybody that's in here and resources. In those folders, I have two uh calendars, I gave one to you all, one to you, and one that you can give to a friend if you want to. But uh uh October is the Mississippi Violence Awareness uh month, and so those um those uh features featured in there, they are um local uh from the Mississippi Delta, and so uh we uh just invite you to give those calendars to a friend and we have a few extra if someone wants one. So we were, uh so Kayla, if you want to, you can introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone, uh I am Kayla Bird-Mon, and I'm also a victim advocate at our house.
No, so so our services at our house is a brief uh overview of some of the things that you do. Do crisis intervention, culturally specific options, emotional support, hospital medical complement, uh law enforcement, court accompaniment, professional counseling, safety plan, shelter, earth, youth support groups, uh victim advocacy support, adult support groups, and we have a twenty four hour helpline. And I really appreciate you all, we really wanted to make sure that you all know that we really appreciate the continued support um for uh, you know, for supporting our agency and just making sure you know that we're still serving survivors of uh sexual assault, missed violence, um and yeah, so.
And I just want to continue uh what she was saying, again, we have had a relationship with Greenwood for a very long time, and we would like to continue to show our support with you guys and for you guys, whatever that looks like. Uh we know in the past, the last time we were here, we mentioned about the law enforcement training that we have for trauma informed care, trauma informed interview. Um and they were allowed to come out and we had a great time, I would say in my opinion. Um we're just making sure that the officers were um aware of some trauma informed care, what needs to say and not to say um to victims of abuse or assault. Uh we also have some banners available of what to say and what not to say, and with your permission and with the permission of the chief, um we would like to present those banners to you, and you can be free to just put them up in your break rooms or in your front area, just to refer to at any time, um.
And we have more, just in case if you all want to think of where in Greenwood you would like to house them, just let us know in there to to the city of Greenwood for a ten hours. Um so yeah, we just thank you so much uh for your continued support, for your support over the years. And uh it's our first time coming.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to comment that uh we thank you all too, we appreciate the partnership. I I do remember our partnership go back many, many, many years. Uh actually with Officer Dennis Mitchell, so that's how long ago that's been, I remember that, so. And you all have the only place in the area that housed those type of people, women, battered women or whatever, however y'all pronounce it, and you know, so and I know, I have known that, you know, times we had to transfer people over there in the past, so uh we appreciate y'all, appreciate y'all serving the Greenwood area.
So we live in the foot and air.
Okay, okay.
How long you all been in business?
Uh this thirty years, thirty years, this year, this nineteen thirty, this nineteen ninety five.
I'd like to say something as well, uh we would love to do a partnership, do a collaboration in some of the fact, um the month of March. You know, this, women's month, um and then I I give, I give all kudos to my C A O. I put a lot on their plate, I should definitely have a conversation with you all about how we can make some things happen. Um I'm, I too know a lot about uh our house, I think Mr. Reverend McCall. And so I I worked well with him when I was a teacher in the consolidated school district. So looking forward to see how we can work, uh we definitely would love to have um those banners placed in our police department uh if possible in the city hall as well.
And just in case you guys did not hear us as well, we do have some extra um service on the fly as well as calendars. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
Nice presentation.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have dilapidated property.
Two at the side, how you doing?
The first, the first agenda that everyone should have is a request to send notice that we have five additional properties that we want to try to add to dilapidated property list for kind of, and we can take those individually, it's on five, or we can take them to the block.
Just go ahead and read them out, so everybody know.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll do them in a block.
I think I made it. All right, the properties are three fifteen Henderson Street owned by Mary Jenkins, Darryl Johnson owned, excuse me, twelve oh five Wright owned by Darryl Johnson, seven twelve West Henry Street owned by Carolyn Bertha Williams, one oh nine West Gibbs Street owned by Annie Rose Holt, and seventeen Howard Street owned by Ruth Jones.
Any question on those before Chair entertain a motion to take those on the block?
No.
Okay, Chair entertain a motion to take those properties on the block.
I still move.
Motion been made and been seconded any further, all in favor, right hand, pose the same sign, motion care. Mr. Palmer.
Who's in there?
Who seconded?
All right, the next list you all have is the dilapidated properties that are set for vacation. These were the ones that were paid for from the last meeting, we had some individuals who were looking to possibly rehabilitate their own properties, and I know Mr. Russell had spoken with a couple of individuals, so we wanted to provide the uh council with an update on those and take action on those at this time. The first one is two oh four West Henry Street owned by Henry, excuse me, Howard Cornwall. Mr. Russell?
Um I think we last uh wanted to table for six months, clean, cut, and secure. Is basically what we were looking at. Uh I I believe that uh until we get our uh uh crew together with uh uh public works to try to go through and do some things that would require uh us to bid it out. Um I believe that would be the best move for that one, uh clear, uh to clean, cut, and secure that that property. It was a burned property, um it it uh uh the owner of the property, I remember this burned about three years ago, so. And that that property uh has overgrown, um and that little duplex area in there is uh uh it's actually gone from uh house to house with the overgrowth. So uh clean, cut, and secure for right now.
Oh, that's the, that's the water fire on uh like that by uh not too far from Howard Street.
Yes.
Um I would like to tell you that to discuss that with you later on.
Yes.
To make a decision on about what I need to do.
No, bro.
All right, I can, tell you the next meeting.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
All right, been motion and been seconded to table that one for the next meeting, all in favor, right hand, pose the same sign, motion care.
That one is on there, um by mistake, that one was actually dismissed at the last meeting. All right, four oh one Kessler Street owned by Harrison Holmes. The last recommendation was to clean and cut it, but we tabled it to give Mr. Russell time to decide whether he wanted any other action to be taken.
And by uh Ms. Ms. Cookson's uh request, she said she spoke with the uh the owner of the property and that the, I believe that's what she uh made mention about, uh that she spoke with the owner of the property and that they were going to rehab the house. Um to my knowledge of it, uh there's a, there's a dumpster there. How long has it been there? The wiring has even faded, you know, from the dumpster that they were using, utilizing the uh the tools. I went up to the area, it is uh, it's 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 terrible. And uh it it is uh, it it's a haven for uh varmints. I would say uh we can still move, uh if we can, if we can still get with the owner, I need to get with the owner and see what their purpose is with it. Are they gonna clean it up? Are they gonna do whatever they do to, because it can't keep overgrowing housing vermin and things that are next to there, we need to do something with this.
So you're suggesting table this to the next meeting also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chair entertain a motion?
I saw more president, we can do the next meeting.
Same.
Motion been made and been seconded, all in favor, right hand, please, pose the same sign, motion care.
Nineteen thirty one Bradford Avenue, the last recommendation was to dismiss this, but the council decided to table it because I think it's been some ongoing issues with them keeping it clean, just to see um whether or not they were still maintaining it, and Mr. Russell will have more information on that.
Not only did we uh I went by there to look, they they've actually done a lot with the cleanup on it. Um and but they, if you look at the inside from uh from the ins, from outside to the inside, they're actually going through to remodel it, and I haven't heard anything else on it. I I I know of the owner, the last owner three years ago, I don't know who owns it now, I guess that's still the same person. But uh I'm, if we can give me just a little bit more time to reach out to them again and find out what their plans are for it. Uh but I believe that we're good on the cleanup until the spring, uh because of what they've done.
So Mr. Russell, what's your recommendation?
Table it and uh give me some, uh give me a little time to uh.
Okay, you want a month or the next meeting?
Uh next meet.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Chair make that motion? All right, been made and seconded, all in favor, right hand, pose the same sign, motion care.
Right, four oh one Avenue else, um this was tabled from the last meeting because I believe that the owner had reached out to Mr. Russell, but there still was a concern regarding the roofing structure that looks like it could fall down at any minute, so I'll let Mr. Russell elaborate on that.
Um on this property here, uh I'm not good with the south wind and the north wind, but to me, the structure is separated, and all around it is overgrown. So I gotta figure out who owns the property in order to see if we can get someone to actually uh take ownership of it, uh to see, I I mean, I would, I would love to get a little bit more time on this just to ensure that we are where we need to be in terms of uh moving forward and maybe uh tearing it down. Cause that that right there, if anybody walks down that sidewalk, if any kid or anything, I think it's a safety hazard.
Ms. Grant.
Okay, uh at our last meeting, Ms. Henderson's daughter was here. Um.
This property also butts up to the backside of uh 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 some property owned by uh uh um a gentleman that is no longer in this area. But the houses in between that area, next to uh Jennings, was it, I think that's Jennings Temple, uh on the backside of Jennings Temple, in that area there is overgrown, a lot of overgrown, a lot of houses are heated back up in there. It's like uh we we need to figure that out too, I need to get in there and see, see, see what's what's going on with it.
So how long you want to table for?
Table for, give me uh about three months on this.
Table three months, I make that motion, table three months?
I'm seconding it.
All right, motion been made and been seconded, any further, all in favor, right hand, pose the same sign, motion care.
All right, the last property is one oh six Martin Pecan, which is owned by the Nolan Henderson estate. And we did have this Henderson's daughter that appeared at the last meeting, and she stated that they don't live here, they were unaware of the condition of the property, and they wanted at least until the next meeting to decide whether they could rehabilitate the property, so I'll let Mr. Russell speak to that.
Uh this being the next meeting, um my uh if, mine is life safety on everything. The house is not secured, um it's overgrown, uh but I'm willing to give them an opportunity to try. To me, the 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 house is really in in poor uh structural condition. So uh I would give, as long as they can secure it, I will give them at least three more months, and that'll put us into spring. However, moving forward, you know, if we can make a decision on it, uh I would rather table it and give it them an opportunity.
I still move.
Okay, seconded, all right, motion been made and seconded? All right, before we vote, the mayor has a question.
Okay.
So I I believe in making sure everything have the opportunity to be revitalized. But I do know that column right there, if that falls, that could be a uh disaster if anybody is in that round.
Yes.
So is there any way we can get in contact with her about securing it immediately to make sure that that possibility can be?
Yes, sir, I I'll look into that, I will get with them, and that's that's immediate. Uh that's what I spoke with her in in my office about, um that that is an immediate need.
Have you been back there since the last meeting?
Yes. Yes, and it's still the same way. So what I'm doing is I'm allowing them an opportunity, so they won't be able to, you know, say that we didn't give them an opportunity or chance. Um because we have to do, we gotta do, that that structure, sound can actually uh take that away.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's a safety hazard waiting to happen, and I'm uh wow. So I I will give them an opportunity to do it, she says she was seeking out a contractor that would probably come down to do it, and I have to get with her to find out how far is she with this, and uh I will be going forward, I keep an eye on it.
So do we have a list of contractors for things like this, for if someone um may want to find somebody?
Uh we do have, they can reach out to our office, but by law, we can't recommend anyone. We have to be able to allow them, give them a list, and they have to go down the list and find one. Uh because uh we don't wanna uh give a favor to any of the contractors that we uh deal with.
So we do have a list?
Yes, so she could, she can go, uh through our office, we have a list, even on the state web page, it's got, you know, contracts that she can make and use, yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
You know, we used to, as a practice, give them thirty days and see if they were doing any progress rather than letting it go three months, and then all of a sudden they start doing something, so if they don't do anything, I think it's gonna sit there for three months, but generally, we'd come back and review it in one month, see if they've done anything. And if they started doing a little progress and getting that working, maybe they could be through with it in three months. It's good to show that they're taking some action. We always kind of did it one month, called traditionally, didn't we?
Yeah.
Rather than three months, and just say any progress done, and notify them that we're gonna review it if no progress has taken place. And that way you you can kind of build a fire under the situation, get it done, if they start doing something, they can even throw them a life preserver to enough time to get through with it, so um.
Yeah, it it's just. It's been our practice to do that, we've we've been, we've been on top of that.
Uh I I agree with Johnny, typically when a structure like that presents an immediate danger, we normally don't, normally don't give them three months, because typically, if you give a person three months.
They gonna take it.
They gonna take three months, they gonna be done, and then they gonna take some some extra time.
Yeah, exactly.
So in a situation like that, I wouldn't uh suggest that we give them any more than uh thirty days.
And if we see progress, we give them another thirty days.
In my war, I don't give them until the next meeting, I wouldn't leave them.
Well, it is a war at six.
So it's up to you.
It uh along with that, uh we looking at uh time and money and a lot of uh the time of the year is what she was trying to relay over to me. And so and I'm, while, you know, I'm I'm not without having a heart to let them do something, the the three months for me were basically to give it back to you guys to pretty much say, let's let's tear it down. Because there is no progress on it now, I'm always looking for progress in in a house, I don't just let it go like that. I have several of them that are more secret right now, so uh I understand what you're saying. But I'm gonna, during those months, I'm gonna be looking at this project, I got it on the radar, so.
Let me ask you this then, Mr. Russell, what can we go and put caution tape around that property?
Yes, we can.
That may be what we need to do.
We did that for um the structure downtown until they fixed it.
Yeah.
To allow people not to go uh too far in that area.
Right.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
That's something we might need to do and put caution tape.
I would give Mr. Dow, we would do that, yes.
Okay. Is that it?
It was.
Oh, well, oh, well, yeah, we got a vote on it, all in fact. It's been made and seconded. All in favor, right hand?
One point, is you keeping it three months or you changing it to thirty days? I've got a lot going on with it.
Ms. Dot said three months.
Three months.
Three months, okay, we got a lot going on there. You can carry the motion, brother.
All right, all in favor? Right hand, pose the same sign, motion care.
All right, that's all we have on dilapidated property.
Yeah, I I wanna uh give an update on our uh on our volunteer uh time that we gave south side of Greenwood, I I gotta commend those hundred and forty volunteers that we had, school age and elderly, those that showed up, we had well over uh probably about five to six hundred bags of trash. Um uh and uh we had well over, I think it's how many tires over?
We picked up like three hundred and fifty that day, but we picked up so far like twenty eight hundred tires thus far.
Wow, yes, and 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 uh and we we had uh lots of volunteers, they were willing to do it. We actually dispatched people from one side to the other, Baptist Town, you know, I'm I'm proud of those uh individuals that got over there, you know, our uh fire department, uh P D, everybody stepped in and they just really, really helped, and can't wait till the spring until we can get the other end from the northeast end down to the backside of uh the underpass, so. Um I I just want to say thank you to those individuals that stepped up and uh came on out for that uh situation, that, thank y'all. So I, I just wanna say thank you to those individuals that stepped up and came on out for that situation there, thank y'all.
Ms. Paul.
I'm glad to hear that they are doing that.
Uh huh.
Because in the past, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Glenn and I picked up several trailer loads. Yeah, took them out on them, y'all took them, number seven?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
And there's more to come, we got more to come.
They're everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, we really, we really showed out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, good people.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, one suggestion, I notice, I, I got to say, I'm addicted to recycling, I just want you to get started. But I noticed a lot of people throwing microwave ovens and stuff like that in the middle of thing. Would it hurt to put, I know, put a dumpster beside it for people? They get a lot of trash and need to get rid of it, maybe there's something, they said, maybe they go by there and put it in that trash thing and, and we can pick that up. I just, it seems to get it up in when somebody has a place to put it, I don't know. Or they can just keep putting the microwave ovens in the, in the paper bin, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we, we, we accept electronics, but yeah, we care for the bin, but in the past, we tried that. We did like a one day pickup of electronics, we had to come one day, we picked up all the electronics. But we can try, I would recommend putting a bin out there because they gonna bury everything else in there anyway. But they can't bring their recycling.
No, it's, it's just something y'all gotta separate when y'all take it in, don't you, trash?
Correct.
We, yeah. Y'all just have to take it and throw it to trash.
They use that bin for everything but that kind of recycling. That's right. It'd be everything in there, except that.
A few times around, started running.
Everything but that recycling. Yep, people be bringing stuff from all over from their bin, out of county and everything.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, uh, policy issue agenda, nothing, number five, the routine agenda. Under that, we have a de cunson agenda, any question under the cunson agenda today?
I have a question under Dr. Klein.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thirty seven, fifty eight, no, thirty four, nine, four, eight. The car center, uh, two hundred fifty four dollars and ninety five cents. Who are we paying that money to at the car center? That's my question.
What number is that?
Three, seven, five, eight.
Yes, eh, communication, three seven five eight. U communication, L S C, right here. That's two hundred fifty four dollars, I see.
I don't see, give it for a juice on there?
Right here, two hundred fifty four dollars and ninety five cents.
That's a U.
Thirty seven, five, eight.
Mm-hmm, that's what it is, thirty seven, five, eight. I wanna know who we paying that money to.
And what is called, the car center or the U for it?
It's U.
U communication, that's probably some radio equipment that fits on a vehicle.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That was an event that they had, she can get half of the rental. She is half of the rental, that's a rental, they had an event there. I think the payment was five hundred and she received half, that was based off the information that I received.
Wait a minute, it was two hundred and fifty eight dollars?
It was two hundred and fifty, oh, I might be wrong, it was two. It was five hundred, the one I, she picked up, so, well.
No, I was gonna ask.
We'll get someone to check on it.
Okay, I'd like to know who we paying to, thank you.
Alright, so, my, make a recall.
Yes.
So if you all have any concerns about anything on Dr. Klein's, if you can share them with me prior to the meeting, I definitely look into it so I can have the information on hand, so.
Good idea.
Um, but we do need to do that next hand, I have another question on Dr. Klein as well. Okay, thirty seven, forty six, boys from Brock and Swaze. That particular salary, uh, I just wanna atomize copy of what you all be doing to receive this money. Uh-huh, like this one, two thousand, seven hundred twenty seven dollars.
Yeah, we, we itemize, it's all me, I itemize my time when I submit it.
Okay.
So the clerk's office would have that.
Okay, I'd like to get a copy of that, uh, Vicky, okay. Um, I have another thing I'd like to share. Um, in this concern, the city council, when Ms. Pully came, um, to be on the board for the hospital. So Brock, did you ever get an, an opinion?
President, a lot of changes first president and taking it up in the other side.
I agree, we on the Dr. Klein's right now.
And we can do that, no problem.
Yeah, we are.
Come back to it, no problem.
We on the Dr. Klein's right now, okay.
Question to Dr. Klein, I, um, normally, like the man said, what I did, I had some problem with it. And so I called Vicky and the day, and she gave us information. And so, that's normal, I do, so I did talk to her, right? And so, and if I have any question that can be asked, then I come to the man.
I should move, take me a broad block rather than.
Okay. Chair and panel, second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, take them in a block. Any further, all in favor, right hand, please, polls the same sign, motion carried. Uh, B, routine resolution, routine items agenda, resolution donating five hundred dollars to the community canoe and authorization donation, authorizing donation of five hundred dollars.
I saw it move your last month, brother.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made and been seconded, all in favor, right hand, polls the same sign, motion carried. Okay, anything under said agenda?
I have a question, since when they put the music system downtown, they needed a place where all the wires go in the ground. And my building was closest to it. And so, since the beginning, I've been paying the electricity bill for those speakers, it's about thirty five dollars a month. So ever since they've been down there, I've been paying that electricity bill. And I think Carolyn at one time was gonna get the utility bill, not to pay it or just not to have it. There's a wire running up there and a meter for that speaker system, but it's a bill to me and I pay it. And then about three months ago, the sound went off. And I called XM and they, it had been billed on the mayor's credit card or on the city's credit card for the fee of the sound system they charge monthly. So, in a conundrum, I couldn't get in touch with who it was, the speakers have been off three or four days. And I started paying it myself. And I just need to figure a way to transfer that over there. You know, that's what, three hundred and fifty, four hundred dollars a month, it's been down to about four years, I've paid about twelve hundred dollars. I'm not looking to give my money back, but I would like to move something.
Who you been paying it to? Who you been paying it to? Green Utilities is owned by the city.
I know.
So like, they all just eat that?
I, I told her, that, that's what.
Yeah, you should have called Brian, they should just eat that.
Not bill up there.
Uh huh. Where they bill your property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's in there for the convenience, there's no other place to put that electronic equipment. So I provided a room up there for all the equipment, the amplifiers and everything else and the radio, I just give that free.
So have you spoken with Brian?
Uh, no, I need to go see, I guess I'd see them a bit.
Yeah, that's who I think you need to see, uh huh.
I'm about to go broke.
Yep.
That's been a while, I don't live in, but with the council.
Four, five years.
I've been going on, yeah, I write your check.
I do get to pick the music though. It ain't all bad.
Okay, Ms. Glenn.
Okay.
Okay.
We all received this from the Westlaw, Mrs. Attorney General opinion. The Attorney General, Jim Hood received a letter requesting the signed it to be meaningful research and reply. You state that Mayor of the City of Gulfport, Mayor, Councilman Municipalities submitted his appointment to Gulfport Economic Development Commission to the City Council for confirmation. The council voted on one of their appointments was therefore confirmation, three against confirmation and one abstained. Therefore, since this appointed and question failed to receive an affirmative vote, he was confirmed. The mayor has indicated that he might resemit the same individual for confirmation. As you recognize in this letter, this opinion is issued on question of lawful future gathering and can either validate nor invalidate any past actions of an officer or agency. You ask whether an individual who previously failed to receive confirmation can be submitted by the mayor to the city council for a second attempt confirmation. The failure of particular appointment to receive an affirmative vote of a majority of the city council present and voting at a meeting to consider the confirmation of mayor or appointed substitute the direction of the appointment. In our, in our opinion, presented the three appointment of resemination of the same individual. Each department shall be headed by a director who shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by an affirmative of a majority of the council president voting on any such meeting. Each director shall serve during the term of office of the mayor appointing him and until the fulfillment qualification of his success. We have previously opinions that the mayor and American City Council City may not circumvent the intent of the statute by continuing to present the same name for reappointment or appointment to the city council once the city council has decided to reject those particular individuals. That's George, March the twenty seventh, nineteen ninety six. We are also opinions that once the city council fails to confirm a particular appointment, section twenty one, eight, twenty three, contemplate finality in so far as the individual parties concerned that and an individual following confirmation here was not confirmed, has been rejected and not be reappointed by the mayor. This is opinion purposed June the third, twenty twenty seven, two thousand and seven. In a contrary opinion, we say that we know nothing that would prohibit a mayor from appointing qualified individual a second time after the council failed to confirm that individual. Following his first appointment, this is Attorney General opinion, Jones, February the twenty third, nineteen ninety. We do not believe section twenty one, eight, twenty three, contemplate or authorize a mayor of a mayor council municipality to reappoint an individual for particular position after the city council has rejected that appointment. To say otherwise could lead to an opening in the process in which a mayor will continue to appoint the same person to a position and the council could, council would continue to reject that appointment. Once the council has failed to confirm an, an appointment, that appointment cannot serve and cannot be reappointed by the mayor. However, there is nothing that will prohibit the council on its own motion from later considering its prior action rejecting the mayor appointment. Therefore, Jones's other opinion completely was above us and he has ever draw on my side to be consistent with this opinion. Uh, Jim Hood, Attorney General, Bill Carter, Carter, Special Assistant Attorney General. So their last statement says that the city council can reappoint that particular person that were off of the hospital board.
It does. And if y'all recall, and, and whether the council could on its own motion reconsider a nominee wasn't the main question that I had for the Attorney General. It was whether the mayor could renominate somebody that had been rejected. And in fact, I was questioned on whether a tie vote is in fact a rejection. And I think this opinion reconfirms my concern that A, um, a mayor can't renominate somebody once they're rejected and that a tie vote is in fact a rejection. Um, and although whether the city council could on their own motion bring somebody back up, that was a question I also asked in my opinion, in my request of October fourteenth. Um, this seems to clear that up. However, I would point out, uh, in that opinion, which is from two thousand eight, seventeen years old, they withdrew that previous opinion, Jones, uh, from nineteen ninety, in which they took in a completely opposite opinion in nineteen ninety, that the mayor, uh, can bring somebody back up. And they withdrew that opinion in this two thousand eight opinion. Um, again, it's seventeen years old. And we can't rely, although we do it all the time, on a previous opinion. It would be my recommendation for us to get a specific opinion on the specific facts that I gave the Attorney General's office, um, in my letter of October fourteenth. And I know they're taking forever, uh, I've called twice and I've been reassured that it's being researched, um, and we should have something in the beginning of December. But it, I would think that that opinion that we requested is going to say something similar to this. No, uh, a three, three vote with an absent council member is not a confirmation, it's therefore a rejection. And that two, they find nothing saying that the city council can't on its own, uh, motion reconsider previous action of the city council. I feel very comfortable getting that opinion. But I, but I assume it's gonna mirror what, what this two thousand eight, uh, opinion says.
What Ms. Glenn has read off, everybody should have, I made sure, I put it in everybody box. So you can study it and, uh, and you'll see that the attorney even has some copy of it. So what you read, we all have.
May I get a copy?
Okay, let him give you a copy, okay. Vicky, give, give it, okay.
That's not it?
No, not to my wit, miss.
Okay. You have another copy, Vicky?
No, that's all I had, mine.
I got the copy that you have.
Right, okay, okay, that's what she just read off.
Same copy.
Isn't it, what you just read off?
Yeah, the same, the same, that's it, the Nally, Nally opinion from Gulfport. Yeah.
What you got here? I got, okay, that was the sign?
Okay, yeah, that's what she read off, you have a copy.
Okay, so, when you think your opinion may come in, since you have it since October?
Right, it's been since October fourteenth. They, they've told me they, they meet every, I wonder if it's every Friday? I think it will be toward the beginning of December, but they haven't given me a date.
So, we can do a follow up as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, in this opinion, I wanna know what that, if I understand this, what it says, what the city council can do.
Well, it says two things, number one, a failed nominee, uh, cannot be renominated during the mayor's term. But they see nothing that prevents the city council on its own motion to reconsider previous action of the city council.
I just wanna be clear.
Okay.
And, and in my letter, I, I also asked a broader question, just because we've had through Mayor Cox's nominees for various positions, we've had a couple of different results besides a tie vote. We've had a failure of a nominee for no motion, we've had failure for lack of a second. And so I incorporated those questions also, uh, into this, or those considered a rejection. So it's not just the hospital nominee, I'm, I'd like for them to give us a full spectrum of, in these particular scenarios.
And that'll be good, cause we need to know.
Exactly.
That in, um, the old one did not go through, period.
Right.
But some did go through.
So I gave them.
Which first came through here, so I'd like to know that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So, question, so, I read one, regulation twenty one, I remember the last, one of the last ones that we had. It's also stated in there that even there was someone who checked, called what I read, that the mayor may bring them back up. I remember reading it, I wanted to see what.
She read that and may, you used, the word was may they use?
Yeah.
Oh, I'd like to see that one.
And so, but I, I, I'll get it, right, right to you, see if I.
That would, that would be different than the opinion Ms. Glenn just read.
And then, I'm just learning something, I, I read the regulation for the same thing, but I do know it says may. So I, I, I'd bring it, I talked to my first person, okay, I understand it.
I'd like to see if I understand it too, that's a make mistake, what you mean, he understand it?
No, it says may, sometimes maybe deviate from. Dividing on some things, it is different. If it said, no, you cannot, then that's just, am I correct? May?
Uh, we would like to see it, you know. I mean, you know, I'm like Ms. Glenn. You know, we, we, we got this in writing right here, Mr. Powell.
Okay.
This is in writing. In my opinion, what I'm like Don Brock is is saying that the council has the authority to bring it back up.
Yes, sir.
And that what this is saying, and we have this in writing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now you get yours in writing for you, I would say, before you say that. You know what I'm saying? You see what I'm saying? Yeah.
Don't find it out, President.
So we move on, okay? Okay, okay. Alright, Ms. Glenn, the bill you specifically asking for is an internet bill. So you might have your code mixed up, your numbers mixed up. This is an internet bill.
Communication bill.
Communication bill.
Okay.
Okay.
Should be my error, cause I can make errors.
Okay. But you're welcome to bring it up at the next meeting, cause we finna close this one. Okay. I have a question, though, too.
Go on, President.
Go ahead. Okay, my question is, is to Darwin, and back to what we started at the uh beginning of the meeting. We being closed Wednesday, Monday and Tuesday, how will your garbage pickup gonna be that's for picking up trash for the city in two days?
You mean the trash or the garbage?
The garbage, I'm sorry, the garbage.
We uh.
Can we be able to pick it up? Because if we don't get it, we all gonna get calls.
Oh, yeah, we should be able to get the garbage today, cause it's easy, cause I think we told the people that's coming to get the bags that we gonna put their trash out Sunday or Monday morning.
Okay.
So we should be able to handle that.
Handle that in two days. Okay.
Do it, yeah.
Okay, okay. Alright, great, then. So it just, right now, if I, everybody put their garbage out Sunday night?
Yeah, so we're also putting bins out, you know.
Putting bins out, too?
Due to the fact of the holiday.
Okay.
We got a bin, we have a saver, out of the area, saver lot, you know, Carleton Avenue.
Okay.
We long this is a big job.
Okay, okay. Mr. McCoy?
President, that's waiting to see what what the governor of the state is saying, bro, yeah. I'm know we never been closed like Wednesday, so that's why I brought it up then, before you say.
Thanksgiving next week, Mr. McCoy.
I think it's, remember the phone call.
Okay.
Cause we can't get penalized for, for doing it, okay?
Yeah.
You know, it's just could my, more than just taking actually off of the government and the question.
Yeah, I just, I mean, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if.
If, yeah.
We, right now, if we staying, we will be out Wednesday, as we staying, unless something change.
That's yeah.
And that was my question to him was if, if we off, if we try, as it's staying, we would be able to pick up the garbage in two days. That's what my question there.
No problem.
Okay.
President, I have one more thing, as everything through, President.
Okay.
You know, each year, the marketplace give out the turkey to to all our uh city officials and also to our department head. We been doing it for the last past twenty one years since I've been on the city council. And we gonna pretend to keep doing that. We give out ham, we also do Christmas season and fruit baskets. Been doing that for, since I've been on the council twenty one years, too. So we're not gonna stop that. We gonna still give my from Greenwood Marketplace. I got something for you, the uh department head, ma'am, the ones that are not here, I'm gonna give them to you, ma'am. These ones that are not here.
Oh, I think we don't give Charles a fruit basket.
And although I have retired from the marketplace, but I'm I'm still active at the market.
He's active.
I'm still working at the marketplace. I remember back, he's out there putting down, just for free turkey, though. You can get them like anytime, but after December the thirty first, you don't have to give a Thanksgiving. But we'll be back again and give you uh ham during Christmas season.
Okay, then you watch back and pass them out, take for the man.
Mary, yo, man, thank you, man. Appreciate it. Thank you. We shall, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir.
For the Greenwood Marketplace.
Thank, thank you, Bishop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still feel I'm on.
There you go, Vicky.
I have a question, a quick question. Uh, in the parliamentary procedure, somebody makes a motion, it gets a second and it never goes for a vote. It should be something in those rules that you wouldn't have to go to Jackson, Robert's rule of order.
Well, if it gets a second, it gotta get a vote, Johnny. You gotta vote, yeah or nay.
But if you're not getting one, if you're getting a motion and no second.
Oh, right.
A motion and a second, but a no vote, it shouldn't be something in the Robert's rule of orders that was said.
Well, that, that's actually what Don was saying. He's, he's finding out.
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly what he was talking about.
Of Robert's rule of orders rather than in Jackson would be. Is that just a place to look? Well, sure they don't go to Jackson every time there's a snafu.
Oh, I see your question now.
But that's just, that's just a thought. I just wonder, how many times you can bring it up? Five thousand or seven thousand, or two, you just do it and then bring it back up, do it, bring it back up, do it? Uh, what, what is, you know, business has to go on, but I just wonder if there's anything in that that says how long you can just keep.
Well, according to the uh Smith versus Jordan uh Supreme Court case uh that happened here, um, any uh deny should be with uh confirmation. I mean, with, when you deny or a appointment, you must provide cause, good cause. Uh, most cases, when we didn't have a second or something was turned, or was, or had died down, we didn't get a just cause. So if this, I mean, we want to comply with that idea.
Okay, Attorney, bring it out, close it, write it, before you get opinion on it, and go from there with it.
Okay, meeting adjourned.